Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 7, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now...
Okay, before we start the meeting, the city manager, Donna Vera, was with us through the majority of closed execs. She had a phone call, an emergency, so she will not be with us the rest of the meeting, but we're in good hands with Fred. So that was just an item for information. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to proclamations. We had a proclamation declaring June 13 through June 16 that the Dushon Awareness Week was presented by Mayor Moore on June 17. Do you... Okay?
Yeah.
And we have a proclamation recognizing Owen Muma Berman. Okay.
Come down there. Owen and family, join us over here, please.
So, before we start, I just want to say I became aware of Owen through Tom Pavinski. Owen had been volunteering through the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, and he realized in the midst of all this reading that there were some monuments that had been covered by brush and other debris. Owen took it upon himself...
Me too.
So Owen took it upon himself to create an initiative to raise funds to make sure that our monuments were protected and accessible and available for the public to see. Somehow I'm crying, I can't... Whereas Owen Muma Berman, a 14-year-old volunteer for the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, started a GoFundMe donation webpage to raise money for improvements in Library Square Park. And whereas his mission began over a year ago when he discovered old marble monuments in Library Square Park that were hidden under overgrown bushes and shrubs. Each of these monuments commemorating prominent Asbury Park citizens from the 1960s, including the founder of the Asbury Park Environmental Shade Tree Commission and Francis Asbury, the man for whom Asbury Park is named. And whereas the Environmental Shade Tree Commission removed the shrubs to reveal the monuments, and Owen devised a plan to better present and honor the important parts of Asbury Park's history by creating an area on the west side of Library Square Park with a small path that leads to Founder's Circle. And whereas, the monuments will be arranged around the outer ring of the circle, interspersed with bushes and the center circle encompassing a large surface area for interactive art projects which pay homage to the current creative energy of the city of Asbury Park art walls. And whereas, trees will be planted behind benches in reference to the original crab apple growth, representing the growth of the future in the city. Today Owen has raised over $17,000 for the goal to make our small part of the world a better place. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council hereby honor and commend Owen Muma Berman who pays tribute to his meritorious acts of leadership and commitment and service to our community.
And also, we should do a picture with everybody from the Shade Tree Commission that's here. They'd always speak first. Do you want the mic? You want the...
First, I would like to thank the Asbury Park City Council for inviting me here tonight and for honoring me. I really, really appreciate it. I never would have thought I would be here in City Hall accepting such an honor. I started caring about Asbury when I started to appreciate the town's history better. My parents have told me a lot about Asbury, and that they first moved down here, it was a very rundown town. Cookman was vacant, the boardwalk and beach were empty, and the town was falling apart. But they said something special was in the air. My parents brought me to Asbury for the first time when I was one week old, which of course I remember like it was yesterday. And by then, things had started to change. Some restaurants and stores had opened downtown, and the boardwalk and the beach were starting to attract visitors. As I started to get older, I saw the town continue to improve and thought about how I could help. I first started by joining the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, where Tom and all of the volunteers took me under their wing. It may be true that my dad made me join, but I loved it immediately. I think that the ESTC has taught me that you can help the world at any age, no matter if that act of helping is small or big. The Shade Tree Commission has become a big part of my life over the past two to three years, an extended part of my Asbury family. The ESTC volunteers are making a difference all over town, and I was inspired to do more. Last summer, while I was walking my dog along Library Square Park, I found these plaques hidden under some huge overgrown bushes. The first plaque I found was for Bishop Francis Asbury. Monuments to really old religious guys are definitely a little sus these days. I mean, who knows what this guy believed or did? So later that day, and for a few days after, I did some research about him. I found that while he had some religious ideas back in the 1700s that we might not agree with today, he was also a pretty forward-thinking guy about a lot of things. He was even an early voice for ending slavery in this country. The other two plaques required some digging into, so I went to the library across the street and found an old newspaper article about the plaques. It seems like the people on the plaques, they grew things for the town. They were doctors and dentists and business people, both men and women. So I emailed my friend Tom and the mayor. They quickly had the bushes taken out. They were gone in less than an hour. I was super happy. Government never works that fast. I knew that we needed to do something with these plaques, because unfortunately now they are just scattered around in patches of dirt. They look ugly. We thought about a lot of options, and eventually we came up with a design, which is meant to celebrate Asbury Park's past, present, and future. Today, Asbury Park is all about art, diversity, music, and great food. The plaques will be arranged around the perimeter of a circle, and in the center will be an interactive piece of art, something with a lot of color and energy, which represents the town today, where kids can color with chalk if they want to. We're also going to plant some new beautiful trees around the circle that will grow and be more beautiful over the years, just like Asbury will grow and be more beautiful in the future. Last weekend, together, we raised almost $20,000, and I can't wait to see this come to life. Lastly, I would like to thank everyone who has helped me to get here. Those people include the mayor, John Moore, the DPW, councilwoman Aileen Chapman, the chair of the ESTC, Tom Pavinski, and of course, my amazing parents. I would not be here tonight if it was not for your inspiration and encouragement. I'm so honored by all of this. Thank you so much, and have an amazing night.
I don't have very much to say, except that it's been a great privilege to work with this young man. When he started, you were 12?
Yeah.
And he's already... It's two years later, and look how tall he is for one thing. He's an amazing worker. He's inspirational. He's industrious. He's committed. But beyond all that, and I'm just going to stop talking about you now, there are two people here tonight who we really have to acknowledge. His parents, Matthew and Jim. Keep applauding, because Matthew will keep crying, which is... They have such pride and such energy for this young man. It's really quite amazing. I know a lot of people who have children, and they love them, and they take care of them, and they're proud of them and so forth, but I've never come across two men who are as absolutely committed and dedicated to the life of this young man. So thank you, Matthew, and thank you, Jim, for bringing him into our lives. Thank you. We're finished? Matt, you want to say something?
Matt, Jim?
Jim?
You know, I'm just going to say, Tom, I appreciate the accolades and the kind words, but I'm not joking when I say he came to us this way. He has had this spirit, this personality, this sense of determination from the time that he was an infant, and Jim and I have just basically said, "We're trying to not screw him up." We're just trying to stay out of his way and not screw him up. The one thing I was going to say is, we came to Asbury now 21 years ago, and it is our home. It is my happy place. Makes me cry. And nothing makes us happier than to see him become part of this family and part of this city that we just love so much, and to see all of you embrace him and create just a broader family around him. So thank you all so, so much.
Well, yeah, I have really not much more to add to that. I mean, we are just incredibly, incredibly proud of Owen, and Asbury has been our home for 20-some years, and just to watch it embrace him and him embrace it back and to sort of pay it forward a little bit has just been really incredible, and I can't thank all of you enough for everything, just all of your support, and I just... I'm at a loss for words, truly. It's been just amazing. So thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
13th and the First Serve Others Trevor Walk on June 24th. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. And we just want to let everyone know, you don't have to stay here through this lengthy meeting, and if you don't want to. Thank you. We are now on to matters from city council. We're in how to kill a house, huh? So I just want to let people know that this coming Monday, June 27, kicks off the Music Mondays concert series in Springwood Park. Music starts at 6 o'clock. We have Kufnuts and Christine, and we have Leon Holmes and Motor City Review for the first concert. That's it. That's all I got. Councilmember Clayton.
Okay. The Quality of Life Committee is doing a, what we're calling a Summer Spruce Up, and on the weekend of July 9, at six locations throughout the city, there will be dumpsters available. And it's an opportunity that things you want to throw away, you can. There will be flyers available. We'll give you the specific locations, and again, it's Saturday, July 9. So if you have any questions, please call 732-710-6415, and we'll fill you in with the details. Thank you. Oh, and then on this Saturday, this Saturday, there will be a food giveaway.
Nine to 12.
Nine to 12. Here at City Hall, at the entrance in City Hall, anybody who is unable to reach to come to the city, please know, if you will call Cassandra Dickerson, we can arrange for a delivery. And it's a wonderful package of food, fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, and a whole chicken. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kendall.
No comment at this time.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yeah, I'm just going to say thank you to Leisha Floyd, our Recreation Department, Eileen, and Jessie. I know we've been talking for months about a swimming camp, and I want to appreciate the fact that the Recreation Commission's doing a swimming camp this summer at the Boys and Girls Club, doing a surf camp with Summertime Surf, and Lake House Music, doing an instrument camp at Lake House Music, and also want to thank all of those entities, Boys and Girls Club, Lake House, and Summertime Surf for doing it at a nominal fee or no fee for children of Asbury Park to take part in those camps this summer. So very appreciative of that. Thank you, guys.
Mayor Moore.
Nothing, thank you.
Matters from the city attorney?
Nothing at this time.
We will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? The meeting is now open to the public. Any members of the public who would like to be heard, please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have three minutes.
And just before you start, Councilwoman Chapman had a graduation to go to, one of many she's attending this year, so it's that time of year with graduations, so that's why she exited the room. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. It's been a while. My name is Teresa Peterson. I live on the west side of Asbury on Borden Avenue. Recently, I have been engaged in a not-so-great relationship with my landlord. Some of you may or may not know Marshall Sigmund and Matthew Sigmund. They are my landlords. They are trying to increase my rent by $950. I paid $2,300 on the west side of Asbury Park on Borden Avenue in a really nicely appointed home. They are trying to raise it to $3,250. This will go into effect July 1st. Once July 1st hits and I pay the $2,300 that I've been paying, they can then move to evict me from that unit. I have, there's two children that live there, and there's two adults that live there. We simply cannot afford $3,250. There is no rent control for a unit in a two-unit home. This I can fight in court. I would rather not fight it in court. I would rather have some people behind me in the city of Asbury Park who can view this as negative, as a way to gentrify the neighborhood. My neighborhood is high crime. There have been stabbings, there have been shootings, there are multiple arrests on any day or any week of the year. This is not the safest area, however, it is an area that is close to my daughter's other home with her father. I have lived in Asbury Park since 2006. I used to put a lot of time and effort into coming to planning board meetings, learning the people behind the scenes, working with kids. What I find is in the unit below me, unit number one, it's a five-bedroom unit, they pay $2,800 a month, there are three Hispanic families living in that unit, because that's how they can afford to live in Asbury Park. The children go to Hope Academy. This is absolutely reprehensible. It is not okay. It is not okay to push people out. It is not okay to push people out if they're black, or brown, or white. It is not okay to push people out if they're gay, or straight, or pan, or bi. It is not okay to push people out because of their familial status, because the people that live and work here have a median income household, median income household of $53,600, maybe $54,000, $55,000 a year. That's the median income as reported in the 2020 census. Yet you have these developers who are purchasing these homes that need to be purchased and need to be rehabbed, and then they are raking us over the coals. Please get ahold of me after the meeting if you are interested in learning more. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, and with the city manager not being here, I asked Melody, the city clerk, to relay all that to her tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kyle Altsnow. I live at 1102 Heck Street with my girlfriend Tara McHugh, who's here. I apologize for bringing up such a trivial matter. I do want to say I have reached out through the SDL portal to the parking committee online form two times, and I just have received zero response, so here I am, now everybody gets to listen to me. Recently, the paid parking and permit-only parking in our area has expanded, where we used to be on the border of it on Heck Street, now we are smack in the middle of it, but we do not have the privilege of getting a parking, a resident parking permit. So I'm here today just to bring that to your attention and see if there's anything that can be done. There's free parking along Heck Street, but that's it. Outside of that, you have to go west of Grand Avenue, and it's just becoming a quality of life issue, because of course, being the only parking there, it's what's scooped up first by people going to the beach, people working on the boardwalk, and things like that, when, you know, simple tasks like going to get groceries and stuff like that become nearly impossible. And the extra frustrating part is, after we park a few blocks away, we then walk past a bunch of resident-only parking spots that we don't have the privilege of parking in. So we're not asking that free parking be taken away anywhere, just that we are allowed to apply for permits living on Heck Street. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, and James Banano is here tonight, if you want to talk to him after the meeting.
Okay.
And does this what we're going to pass tonight? Help?
Yeah.
Okay, so we introduced an ordinance at the last meeting, because there's like two people on Heck and two people on Grand, they're in like the twilight zone. So by introducing and passing this ordinance tonight, you're going to be eligible to get a parking permit, correct?
Yes.
So we're a step ahead of it.
Okay.
And we moved it up, instead of having the hearing two weeks from now, we're having the second hearing tonight, and again, you can talk to James and figure out, but again, there was two people on Heck, two people on Grand, where it just like made better sense, instead of spanning the entire zone, say three blocks in the middle of summer and inconveniencing like 500 residents, let's just pass something to help these four people. So you're in good shape.
Okay.
But check to make sure after the meeting, if you want to stay, to make sure we pass it, but I'm sure we will.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, again, Melody, please refer to the city manager, like, you know, it's not the first time I've gotten a complaint that our portal for complaints does not work, and that should be unacceptable to all of us.
I get more complaints about our portal of complaints.
Yes, we all do, so that's something like we have to fix. Okay, then thank you very much. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Anna Barnes. Monmouth County without a doubt is the best place on this planet.
Anna, can you just give us your address, please?
Oh, 25 Center Street in Keyport, New Jersey.
Okay.
The few short years I've spent here have transformed me into an influence of leadership, confidence, and the commitment to be better. I became an image that as a child I could never see myself as, and I thank this county and citizens like all of you every day. I am here to better the quality of life for this county and every walk of life in it, our ecosystems, our furry friends, our children, our teachers, our veterans, our first responders, our less fortunate, and many more, but this is just to name a few. I committed myself to the responsibility of leading our next generation into a future of love, of power, and of unity. Part of my commitment includes raising resources for our students, volunteering at our local food kitchens, volunteering at our local group homes, assisting those battling domestic violence, assisting those battling with alcohol and substance abuse, and of course, keeping our parks, beaches, and waterfronts clean. I am open and driven to do my part in any way that I can for the better good of Monmouth County. For the better good of all of you, this crown and sash that I wear is not the reason I am here, but the product of what I've done, as well as part of the commitment moving forward. Please feel free to accept my contact information and efforts to not make Monmouth County a beautiful place, but keep it a beautiful place together. Thank you all. Again, my name is Anna Barnes, Miss New Jersey, East Coast, USA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Nancy Sabino, 1004th Avenue. I have noticed for the past few weeks that there's some sort of cable with boxes tied up onto a lot of the phone poles. Nobody actually said what they were doing there, and they don't seem to be permanently affixed yet. They're just kind of tied to the post at eye level, or in some cases, on the ground now. I think it would be helpful to figure out what they are and when they're going to be permanently affixed, so they're not able to be vandalized, or so that at least the citizenry knows why they're there and who put them there and what they're for. That's all.
Okay, we'll have somebody getting back to you tomorrow. Melody, you'll pass out.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if it's 5G or what it is, but it probably is.
Okay.
Yep, you're good radio.
Okay. Rita Moreno, 504 8th Avenue. What was that? And there's a few things on the resolution that I'd like to ask you about. How come we have to pay back bills to the sewer plant in every other department other than the sewer? That's number one. Number two is, we're getting a community block grant, right? Now, you know, in the past, things have gone wrong. I'm not blaming you, but you have to be very careful when you give out these grants, because there's always somebody in the wings that's illegal. I know of one thing that happened in this community block grant. Somebody got an air conditioner, and they weren't entitled to it, and that was a couple... conditioner and they weren't entitled to it, and that was a couple of years ago. You have to be very careful about these grants, because people are coming into town and taking advantage. And the other thing I wanted to know about Toll Brothers, are they the ones that are going to build on Heck Street?
Yes.
I don't know. And have you done anything with the TRC? And let me see if there's something else here. How about the, what do we get from the county? It says here that we're getting a grant for housing, for affordable housing. That's a joke, after what that lady just said. I mean, like, what's affordable housing? That's got to be explained. I know it doesn't mean what this woman was talking about, $2,300 for her apartment or whatever, but that's about it. I want to know about the community block grant. Who's going to be watching that? You have to really watch these things, and you should get reports from these people that are running these grants, or else we'll have another $2 million that we owe. And the other thing I want, I still got time, right? I wanted to say that you should really think about taking back the school board, and no more elected position to the school board. You have much more control if you get, if you appoint people. I never realized it before. But you really should think about that, because, what, $1 million this week for the school from our taxpayers running? That's what, those are the things you should be working on, how to reduce the taxes, and that's one of them, to have an affordable school board, not $31,000 a student and that's not learning. That's not right. You have to get involved in that, because it's part of the city. But everything is, the housing authority, oh, no, you can't do anything. The school board, oh, no, no, you can't do anything. Everything, you can't do anything. I'd like to know what you could do. Okay?
Yes, Rita?
Yes?
One minute, please. Okay, Rita, I'm sorry, your first question was short, and I didn't understand it, so go back to your notes. What was your first comment or question?
Which one?
Your first one.
Oh, the first one about the community block grant.
No, 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 there was something before that.
One before that?
If you forgot about it, don't worry about it.
Let me see. I even forgot, no. The community block grant. Oh, the one about the sewer plant. How come we have back bills? That's the other thing you got to watch, the budgets.
And that's, okay, so, right, so that's one of the times where it's in our favor. We build the sewer bills through the water company's bills. So sometimes the water company makes mistakes, and usually, we're giving rebates. This time, we're collecting extra money. So this is a positive, Rita.
Okay.
So, right, and again, that's because-
Well, it's not explained right in the resolution.
Okay, the CDBG, the majority of the management, has been turned over to the county, so the city does get the money, does meet, does decide, but as far as administration-wise, that's been turned over to the people that run the county, CDBG. Toll Brothers project you're talking about is the one on Lake Avenue, which will be facing Wesley Lake. TRC, nothing's been done yet. That's one of the few committees or organizations where specifically it says in the ordinance, who sits on the TRC. It doesn't say the mayor or his designee. It says the chairperson of the planning board, the councilperson from the, on the planning board, a certified architect, three people from the state that never show up, which doesn't help the TRC. So that's still in the works. We're still looking at it to see how we can correct that. As far as an appointed board or an elected board, you know, that's something, if you want to try to get petitions and change it, go ahead, but I don't think you're going to be successful. And as far as, is there a million dollars on those bills and claims to pay the Board of Education? Yes, which we have to do by law because they have to pay their bills. So whatever their budget is, the city has to fund it.
I know, but you, when you appoint people, you have more control over them.
Right.
So that budget doesn't have to be $31,000 a student. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I don't mind if they learn, but they're not.
Okay, thank you, Rita.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Louise Murray, Grand Avenue, Asbury. What do you want, I have a question on bill resolution. Do you want the page number? Do you want, I don't know what you want first. It's page six?
Hold on one second, and we'll give you extra time if you need it.
I just need an explanation for this one.
Well, there's probably 500 bills on there, and I looked at a lot of them, but I'm hoping I can give you an explanation of the one you're going to go. So go ahead, I have bills and claims. What, do you have a package page number? What do you have?
Do you have it?
Yeah, what do you have? What, do you have a package page number?
The package is 85, page 85.
Package page 85, go ahead.
Okay. The second one, 20125265, triple zero, 255, Fire Department. The second one down.
I see, and yet for $3,538.
What is a revenue guard fee?
I don't want to answer this and be wrong, so we'll have somebody get back. We'll have Joanne Booth get in touch with you tomorrow.
Okay.
We pay a company to collect ambulance services when we take people to the hospital and everything like that. It could be that, but again, we'll have Joanne Booth, the CFO, get in touch with you tomorrow with that. So it's, you have to-
The point is-
Yep, revenue guard for $3,538.
Yeah, the point is, it's $3,538.
Right, okay.
And you're going to vote on it, and you don't know what it's for. I don't get it. Whatever. Thank you.
Like I said, there's 500 bills on here, and I probably went through 80 of them, but I missed that one because I probably asked that question in the past, and I think I'm right, but I'm not going to swear to it, so we'll have Joanne answer you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
Randy Thompson, Help Not Handcuffs, residing at Park Avenue. Just a couple of quick questions. I want to see if I can pin down a date with you. Officer Stephen Love, an officer who has a record of doing a lot of harms to this community, was recently shown all over television in the state mauling two civilians with an illegal weapon for a police officer to use, which is a flashlight. There's an Internal Affairs investigation going off on that. When did that start? I understand that the appropriate authority over the police department, Donna Viero, is not here tonight, but I would like to get when that IA investigation first was initiated, if you can't answer it now.
I cannot answer that now.
That's fine, but can you commit to following up? I'll send a follow-up email as a reminder. Can we get that?
Right, or else you can just, as usual, send in an Oprah request and get it the same day.
Okay, if they won't contest it.
When it's-
I'm fine doing that, if they won't contest the release of the documents and it taking a year.
If you submit an Oprah request saying, when did the Internal Affairs start, and you don't get a response, let me know.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Second question. In 2020, we did an Oprah request, Open Public Records Act request, for arrest data, for drug arrests, to see how it impacts the city and residents. That was for 2019 data. The Asbury Park Police Department prepared those records, and I had a couple of discussions with the clerk about this, and during that, they released for drug paraphernalia, excuse me, paraphernalia arrests, which were over 400 arrests, if I'm remembering correctly. They released personally identifying information, everything you need to steal someone's identity, your name, your address, your driver's license number, your social security number. So I followed up with the city, but I didn't get a response, what policy changes have been made, you know, has anything taken place at the police department to prevent this from happening, this egregious harm? And keep in mind, this is during the pandemic, when pandemic benefits were going out, and people were complaining they weren't getting them, their identities were being stolen, when $2,000 checks were going missing. This is a pretty widespread harm caused by the Asbury Park Police Department. I'd like to know what policy changes have been there, because we still don't have civilian oversight over this problematic police department. If, I don't know if you have a response to that or acknowledgement.
Yeah, but you want to keep on going, and then I answer that later?
It's up to you, John.
Okay, well, I'm sure policy changes have been made. Again, with the city manager not being here, she can't answer it more specifically. We'll get you that answer.
Okay, we're running out of time, so I'll leave it with this. We'd like clarity as to what changes have been made, but also, the Asbury Park Police Department likes to put a spy tower, a mobile video unit, pointed at people's windows, and members of this community have said, we feel like they're watching us when we're going to the bathroom. Now, there's been an email chain, which we read because we did an Oprah request on that, saying that, well, we have policies to make sure that doesn't happen. The APPD could not do a simple records request without jeopardizing the privacy of hundreds of residents, so I don't want to hear that they're doing everything perfect with these spy towers. It's just something to leave on. I look forward to the follow-up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Randy. And like I say, if for some reason, again, we don't know why Donna had to leave early, it was an emergency, if she doesn't get back to you tomorrow, you know, call me, email me, and I'll find out as soon as we can get you those answers. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I know I'm a face you haven't seen for a long time. Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park. I had two quick questions, well, one may not be quick, but if you could, I have been following the city website for updates on the, where we stand with the pool club application. I saw one update, haven't seen anything since, and I'm hoping that someone can give us some sense of where that stands. And the second question is, because we haven't been down here in a while, we noticed all the fencing around the Sunset Avenue Pavilion, and are just wondering what's happening with that. Thank you.
Okay, as far as the pool club site, there's been no change, no applications have been submitted by I-STAR to do anything. We said months ago, as soon as an application is submitted by I-STAR, we will go public with it, to let everybody know. As far as the fence around Sunset Avenue Pavilion, parts of the building were falling down and could do harm to people. So they put the fence up. We have a problem with it where it's on Ocean Avenue, and it's going to be addressed this week, where, you know, because where the old, you went through the middle of the building to get to the upstairs, to the beach bathing area, it has a canopy over the sidewalk. Now, the construction fence, you can't push a baby down Ocean Avenue, baby crib or baby carriage down Ocean Avenue, or a handicapped ADA cannot get up and down Ocean Avenue. They're going to be notified this week that that has to be either take down the canopy or put up a construction site that they do in New York City, we did on Emery Street, that people can walk underneath there. They don't have to like, you know, get off a curb without a ramp, get back on the curb with either an ADA or a baby carriage or something like that. So that's, that's in the works of the construction department, telling them, either knock that down, or give us something where people can walk on the sidewalk.
And whose responsibility is that? Is that the city, or is that?
The fence was put up by the owner, Madison Marquette, because they recognized parts of the building were falling down and could do damage, and then they would be sued, but meanwhile, we can't have a construction fence blocking off the sidewalk where nobody can get back and forth up and down Ocean Avenue. So the city is on top of that, and like, in the process of telling them, either fix it or move it.
Okay, and I will have your continued assurances that if anything does get submitted by I-STAR, or is there a period of time by which they need to submit plans for the pool club, or how does that work?
I guarantee you, like, as soon as we hear anything, we will make it public, same as I said, whatever, two months ago, six months ago, ever since it was passed, and while they're not moving on it, there's various reasons, rumors, some of them could be true, some of them could be not true, but right now, there's no plans before the city whatsoever.
And is that an undetermined period of time that they have to do that, or is there an expiration date by which they would have to submit something?
I'm not sure, and I'd ask Fred, and I'm not going to be sure if he's going to know, just, I mean, we can get you back that answer through the planning and-
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at the planning board resolution. I don't know that there was a time period attached to it, but we can certainly verify that for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Hi, Pam Lambertons, Sunset Avenue. I just wanted to announce, remind everybody that this Saturday is the citywide garage sale, so be sure and turn out. A lot of places are participating, so wander around the city and bring your friends. I appreciate Rita asking about the TRC. Just change the ordinance, so the makeup of the committee is different.
I wanted to ask two questions about transparency and accessibility. You are, as a council, resisting doing meetings, all community meetings via Zoom, and I was wondering if you would explain why that is. And as a follow-up, if you got a really good reason for not doing Zoom, would you consider live streaming? That's it.
Well, we'll consider everything and anything. We'll look into that. One of the reasons we're not doing, I'm going to say a hybrid, is because some people are concerned, and some other municipalities concerned, is like, okay, we pass an ordinance, and then five people come up and say, I was on the telephone and nobody took my call. Then what happens? Then we're on the courts. So it's like, it's a gray area out there, where we're looking from guidance from people higher than us, like, what would happen to us if that happened? So, you know, it's, it's not just a black and white issue. There is a gray area out there, like, what would happen, like, you're on a Zoom call, you have an important question about ordinance number 20112, and like, hey, I was on the call all night, I tried to raise my hand, I didn't know how, so I want the ordinance reread. So we have concerns, legality is what we can do.
Or maybe there's a way around that, you know, have people send an email to Melody saying, I'm going to speak tonight on this, so that you are for.
And it always leaves the open door, well, I don't have a computer, I have a phone, I call it in by phone. I mean, so again, we'll look into everything. We are looking into it. Right now, it's not on, I'm going to say, the front of the boiler until we get better guidance from other towns and, you know, go from there.
There are solutions, I think.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
No, share, please feel free to share them all with us.
I will.
Okay.
So while you're not fond of the Zoom meetings, how about live streaming?
I really don't know enough to talk about it, Pam, so it's something like, I'll talk to Amy and AP-TV and see what that means. I mean-
Okay. Thank you for considering it.
Okay.
I don't know that we have the live stream capabilities, Pam. I'll have to check that with AP-TV.
To do the live stream? They've done it before.
Live stream or taped and aired it?
Live stream.
For what meeting?
During the elections, when they live stream the debates that were broadcast from House of Independence.
Oh, yeah. Yep. I don't know that AP-TV, okay, I'll check. Yeah, maybe you're right. That is not my recollection, but you could absolutely be right.
Good evening. My name is Annette Harrell. I'm a resident of the Asbury Park town. I have some papers for you guys. Do I give it to you or him?
When you're done, you can present them to us.
Okay. Actually, I would like you to have them now, so you can ask-
Okay. I just didn't want to eat into your time. Go ahead.
I'm here this evening to speak about the meeting that I had with the city manager, me and three other tenants, residents of Asbury Park. The meeting was so unprofessional, very disturbing, and it got to a point where I've never seen a city manager character and personality the way I did that day, of not caring about just about everything that we covered with her, from the police department to city activities for the West Side, concerns as far as the residents there. Everything was an excuse, or we can't do, or we can't control, or just bottom line, looking at her watch the whole time because she did not want to be there. I really believe she did that, and she met with us just to shut us up, you know, like, because everything that was- because everything that was talked about, from even jobs for different people on different sides, I come to the conclusion that even when I'm not here anymore and I moved to somewhere else, God, hopefully that will happen, that a lot of things is just not going to change. And the reason why is because people talk the talk, but they don't walk it, they don't show it. And every single time I've been here in other meetings as well, just not here, but other places too, you get the same speech, you get the same thing. People, it's, it's a game. It's really a game to certain people, and I'm speaking for the people of my race, my color, and everybody else, because again, until you realize and face the facts of what is actually transpiring in this, in this world, all over the place and here, it is going to constantly continue to be the same way. Now, one thing I said to her was very disturbing, and she got up from, she actually got up from the table and said, was going to walk out, because we were speaking about certain people getting everything they want, and then when we come and ask, it's a tuggle for us to get the same things. Why? And now I understand, because she got offended, because she is one of those people, she just didn't reveal it to us, but we already knew. And it's not a problem. It's, it's never a problem. But again, I wrote, I put it in writing for you. I feel like, I don't know who voted for her. Honestly, I would never vote for a person that is siding.
Ms. Harrell, you're past your three minutes.
I know.
I'll let you finish your sentence.
But that's, that's all I basically wanted to say about that.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it. I just think that, you know, a change, you need to see it.
Okay.
Soon.
Appreciate the information, we'll look into it. Anybody else like to be heard?
Not seeing any other members, a motion to close public.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public comment portion of the meeting is now closed.
Just one quick thing for Ms. Michelson, Beach Club. Status, doormat, planning board approved, has yet to start resolution compliance. That's our latest update. Got it?
We are now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting of June 8th, the municipal council regular meeting of June 8th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Clayton.
abstained, I wasn't present.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
Yes, I wasn't present.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda has resolutions 2022-286 through 2022-316. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
And resolution 22-288, that is part of the consent agenda, is a resolution appointing a member to the Asbury Park Green Team, and that appointee is Jana Manning.
Thank you.
Move it. Second.
We are now on to, that was included in, in the first reading. I just wanted the public aware of who the appointee was.
Yep.
We are on to individual resolutions. The first individual resolution we have is 22-302, a resolution approving the payment of bills.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 22-303, a resolution authorizing a contract negotiation for school bus transportation services for the 2022 recreation program.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-304, a resolution authorizing a contract to Seaman Toy Bus Company for school bus transportation services for the 2022 recreation program. Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-305, a resolution awarding a contract to Lynx Waste and Recycling Solutions for emergency demolition of 1117 Sunset Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-306, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 22 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159, Clean Communities Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-307, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2022 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159, Click-It or Ticket Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
22-308, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2022 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159, Affordable Housing Alliance, Inc., Summer Basketball League Grant.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-309, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2022 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159, Affordable Housing Alliance, Inc., Educational and Recreational Enrichment Grant.
Move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-310, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2022 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159, Recycling Tonnage Grant.
Move it.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-311, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special item, items of revenue in the 2022 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159, Community Energy Plan Grant.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-312, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park, authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into a subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Partners LLC and Toll Brothers, Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC, for residential development on Block 3103, Lot 1, granting conceptual approval to the Asbury Park Toll Brothers, Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC, regarding residential development on Block 3103, Lot 1, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-313, a resolution adopting the Monmouth County Home Consortium Fiscal Year 22 Annual Action Plan for Housing and Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-314, a resolution to back bill sewer charges on various accounts.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to ordinances, second readings, public hearing. Well, we have a brief overview of the ordinance that is up for public hearing is ordinance 2022-10, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park establishing certain parking regulations and amending and supplementing Section 7-41.5, entitled Residential and Employee Permit Schedules, Fees and Regulations of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park Regarding Residential Parking Permit Eligibility.
Do you want James to do it, Fred? James, you want to give a brief?
Sure, I have five ordinance.
Yes, just so everybody knows what we're talking about. So James is the director of transportation.
For the ordinance being discussed, discussed tonight, is to change some of the eligibility requirements for being eligible for a permit, parking permit in the city. Basically, we found that when we extended the metered parking, we trapped a few areas of the city, especially on Heck Street and Park, that were kind of stuck with very limited parking options, and ended up having to park very far from their home, which they didn't have a permit. So by doing this small change, we allow those areas become eligible for parking permits and to be able to park closer to their homes.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2022-10?
Move it.
All in favor? If any members of the public would like to be heard on the ordinance being presented for a public hearing, please go to the mic and state your name and address for the record, and your comments must be regarding the ordinance for public hearing.
Pam, Rita Moreno, 504 EBIT. Is that going to be a paid parking lot right out here? Is it going to have a meter?
No, this, Rita, we're doing an ordinance that just has to do.
I saw the ordinance, it was this thick.
No, 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 Rita, the ordinance is this thick, one page. You got a different ordinance. So the one that you're talking about for outside was passed at the last meeting. That's already been passed. That was to, we got to go back to this, and you can call me tomorrow, I'll explain last, what we did last meeting. But this one is to help a couple people who got caught, again, in the twilight zone, being on ground or being heck, and they do not have driveways, and so they were stuck with no parking, so this was the most common sense solution to help people get through this year before we change it next year, because we would never change a massive ordinance in the middle of the summer.
Well, the other thing you should tell the planning board is if there's a hotel like the tide.
Okay, but Rita, Rita, that has nothing to do with it.
I guess it does, they have no parking.
That has nothing to do with this ordinance.
Oh, well, I just wanted to tell you about that.
Okay. You snuck it in, Rita.
They have no parking.
Okay, seeing nobody else wants to be heard, motion to close.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor? The public hearing is now closed on ordinance 2022-10. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-7?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned.